The schedule for 12 o'clock, but this is our budget meeting. I'm calling it to order and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Ayvedra.
Yes, thank you, President Valarde and trustees. We're here this afternoon for the second of a series of budget workshops that we'll have over the course of the spring. As we're working to, you know, through the budget development process and aligning and strategizing our investments. So that we can accomplish the provisions in our strategic blueprint. So at this time, I know that Martha Aguirre, our CFO, and her staff have been diligently working to begin the process and share information. So I'm going to hand it over to her staff so that they can begin to share with us an update on where we are and where we're going in terms of our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Ayvedra. Good afternoon, President Valarde, trustees, Ms. Ayvedra. As we've shared with you in the last meeting, the legislative session is on and there are multiple funding factors that are currently being decided upon. And with that being said, there's a lot of fluidity in where and how we can protect some of our funding allocations. So we're proposing or we're trying to establish the foundation of information that we're presenting today to prepare us as we move forward with the budget development. So we understand where we are today and how we will be moving forward and then other considerations along with the budget. With us today, I have a full team here for us to share with you. I have Ms. Maria Pineda, who is the Executive Director of Financial Services, and she will be providing you with a financial forecast of current year. Then we've got Ms. Cynthia Blessing Washington, who is our Executive Director of Budget and External Financial Management. And she will give you a little update on our budget development process as of now. And then we've got Mr. Walt Byers, who is our Treasurer, and he will give us an update on the legislative session and some of our, the bills that are out there that are going to impact us or our park community in one way or another. And then we've also got our HR team with us. We've got Ms. Yama Perro, who is Executive Director in the HR office, as well as Ms. Patty Cortez, our Chief HR. And so we'll go ahead and get started with our financial forecast. You received the booklet and I'm gonna guide you to page number three on the booklet. And I just want to share that, you know, the purpose between the forecasting of our budget, our current financial status is critical. Because it helps you make informed decisions on what next, what steps we need to take next. Whether or not there's risk, financial risk, based on maybe perhaps over expenditures or just any, any factors that might impact our budget negatively. And also positive communications that will help you make informed decisions as we move forward and have many considerations to take on. And so I'll go ahead and move it over to, get it over to Ms. Pineda.
We're on, just so that you're following along in the booklet.
It's page three.
Three is the, kind of the spreadsheet page that we're looking at.
Thank you, Cynthia Pineda. Good afternoon, President Valarde, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. Maria Pineda, Executive Director. So we are actually going to begin on page four. I'll come back to page three. Kind of want to show you some of the pie charts and bar graphs that we have. So our first one is FY '23 budget versus forecast. And again, before we move to next year's budget, I want to present to you how we forecast and we project we're going to end the current year ending June 30th of 2023. Okay, so this particular bar graph, this, this provides you an overview of our three funding sources. Of course, our local, our state, and our federal. The blue bar represents our current year amended budget. And the red bar represents our current year revenues recognized plus our forecast from March through June. Okay, so as we, we can begin on the left-hand side with our local revenue. We see that we budgeted $194.5 million at our local level. And we anticipate at this time that our local revenues will come in higher than what we budgeted originally. And this is primarily attributed to the property value growth. Okay, so when we budgeted originally, we budgeted at a 4.17% property value growth. Now, of course, that's based on the data that we had at the time a year ago. And we also budgeted conservatively, you know, which is a very common approach. Now, what we've seen is more of a 9.56% property value growth. But with that in mind, as your property value growth goes up, your state revenues are also adjusted and go down. Okay, so we'll see that on the next, on the next set of bar graphs here.
Could you just repeat what you just said, that phrase on the growth part?
Yes, absolutely. So when we budgeted a year ago, we budgeted conservatively at a 4.17% based on the data that we had available at the time. Now, what we've seen is more of a 9.56% overall property value growth. So that's why we anticipate at this time that our revenues for property taxes will come in higher.
So if you recall that when we adopt the budget, it's usually in May and June, which our certified values don't come officially until July. And so we adopted the budget with a very conservative approach in, in our property values. We weren't sure as where we were going to land with that increase.
I think that the other, the other comment that was made was in terms of the, the local revenue. And how the state adjusts based on the, the local revenue. So if the local revenue would have come in lower, the state allotment would have adjusted, right? Because it came in higher, as she said, as you look at the next bar, you're going to see that the state revenue came in just under.
Yes, thank you for that, Ms. Pineda. As we move to our state revenue bar graphs here, we budgeted at 310, almost 311 million. We do anticipate here to come in a little under. We're really at 10.2 now. There's two factors here, of course, the offset to the property value growth where the state adjusts the state revenue. And we also have a lower, we project a lower ADA of 691 at this time. So as we proceed to the end of the school year, what we've seen is that, the trend is that we see a drop in the ADA as we get closer to the end of the school year. And the next one is our federal revenue. We can see that we budgeted $21.3 million. We anticipate this particular, the federal revenue for our general fund to come in higher as well at 22.5, almost 22.6 million dollars. And this is primarily attributed to higher revenue coming in for our impact date, our impact date. The last, the last two bars here is our overall, our total revenue at 526.7, which is our budget amended, amended budget for revenue. And then our current amended budget, our current actual forecast is at 526 million dollars. The next one, please. Okay, on the next page, which is page five, this provides you a breakdown on what, what is included in our local revenue, our state revenue, and our federal revenue. So a little more of a breakdown by percentage. With our local revenue, of course, we see in the blue that is primarily from our property taxes. That's where our revenue comes in. We also see here our investment earnings come, make up approximately for this current year 3.45%. Just to kind of give you a little bit of feedback here, our investment pools right now are at about 5%. We're earning at about 5%. A year ago, we were earning .4 of a percent. So you can see that significant difference in, and the turn in the market. Our building rental or facility rental make up a .04 of a percent. Athletic revenue, .23 of a percent. Our miscellaneous revenue, a little over half a percent. And then our tuition, about .05 percent. Just to kind of give you an idea of the percentages of the different areas of the different revenue sources at the local level. At the, on the right hand, upper right hand, it provides you an overview of our state revenue. And our state revenue is composed of two things. It's our TRS on behalf. And what that is, it's just a book entry. This is the matching portion that the state does for a TRS eligible employees. And then, of course, our state funding, which includes our at-risk, our state comp ed, our special education, and of course, the average day attendance revenue generated. On the bottom corner, we have an overview of our federal revenue for our general fund. We can see that our indirect cost revenue is 39.58%. This is the, the money that we generate for administering our federal programs. Impact, impact aid at 26.16%, our SHARs at 31.48%, and then our ROTC at 2.78%. The next one, please. This particular bar graph provides you an overview of our current amended budget and our forecast expenditures. So what we've taken here is our year-to-date activity for our expenditures as of February 28th. And then we project March through June, okay? So we use data from, of course, we reach out to leadership, to campuses, to discuss about the, what they plan to spend between now and the end of the fiscal year. We also look at the projection of our payroll expenditures for our teachers, even those paychecks that we pay through the summer, fringe benefits, and any other non-payable expense. So right now, our budget is at 557 million, almost 558 million is where our current amended budget is. And we do anticipate to have to spend 526.3 million dollars, so under, well, under our budget. I'll explain a little more when I present our, our statement as well. So that will be positive variance of 31.4 million dollars. Okay, so this is a pie chart that provides you an overview of our expenditures by category. So the blue area, 35.51%, as you all know, is primarily related to our personnel costs, which is our largest expense in the general fund or as a district. Our professional and contracted services represent 6.71%. Materials and supplies at 3.56%, from the green, green area. Other operating expenses at .92%, a little short of 1%. Our debt service represents a little over 1%, and then our capital outlay investments at 2.27%. Could we go back to the, the statement? Thank you. Thank you for that, Cynthia Pineda. So this particular statement is the equivalent of an income statement in the private sector. And as I mentioned, if we start, we begin on the left-hand column, with our adopted budget, which was, now is budgeted and was approved by the board. The next column is our amended budget, so that represents any amendments brought to the board throughout the year. And as we look at the bottom of this, at the bottom of this column, we show 32.5, 32.5 million dollar. And that was the amendments that were brought to the board. And what that primarily consists of is our roll forward that we made and we set aside in the previous year. As well as some capital investments for, for our district of 4.2 million dollars. Now, on the next column here, and I'll explain what the, how much we have as our remaining budget as well. On the next column, on the blue column here, we start at the top and we show that our total general fund revenue is at 525.9, almost 526 million dollars. We do show on the next column where it has variance, budget versus actual, we do see in the red there 813,000. So we are, we do anticipate at this time that we will fall slightly short from what we budgeted. Now, that is 99.8% that we anticipate to collect and earned from our budget, which is, which is something great. Those are great news that we can budget and actually collect 99.85%, almost at 100% of what we originally budgeted a year ago. As we move down to our expenses, we do anticipate right now that our expenses will be at 526.3 million dollars. On that next column under variances, I do want to talk a little bit about some of those variances. I mentioned the 31.7 million dollars that we see left in the budget. That is primarily funds that are already set aside and restricted for construction. We had issued, if you all recall, maintenance tax notes. Those particular maintenance tax notes are restricted and specifically designated. One is for the El Paso High School renovations, which is a good portion of that. That is approximately 16 million dollars. And also about 1.5 million dollars is for funds that had been designated for a marquee, for the Coronado weight room renovation. For also for the roof at Jefferson. And that's primarily in our function 81. We can see under function 81 that we have 17 million dollars. And as I mentioned, the bulk of that is from our maintenance tax notes. If we move up to function 11 there, we do see in the red a 1.2 million dollars. That is, that is primarily, what we need to do here is realign our budget. And so that's a budget amendment that will come to the board in the near future. And what we'll do is we'll move some additional funds to cover summer school expenditures for approximately 3 million dollars. There is some monies in there already. We're going to add additional monies there. As well as a state matching portion for our TRS on behalf as well. As we move down to function 13, we do see that we're going to have approximately 4 million positive variance in that particular function. There has been a realignment as well of, of some of the personal salaries. I know that on our campus teaching coaches, we have decided to, to split the funding there between two separate functions. Function 11 for instruction to assist in the classroom and then of course, function 34 as well. So that creates some of that money that we need to realign as well.
Can you, can you repeat that? So that's the way they're, they're currently funded that way this year, but we don't intend to fund them that way in the, in the coming year, correct?
And on function 34, we do see 3 million dollars that we will have a positive variance there. That is for capital replacement of our buses. And so that's something that we anticipate to, to do in the future and probably will not happen in this particular fiscal year.
Okay.
On function 53, data processing services, we do anticipate.
Hold on, I have a question about that. Do you want me to hold the question still and, or do you want me to jump in?
I would say if we could get through the presentation and then jump in, so we can all ask questions at the same time.
Of course. Under function 53, data processing services, we do anticipate to have a positive variance there of 4.5 million dollars. And this is primarily, we have received an E-rate reimbursement that helps us to cover a lot of our internet services for 2 million dollars that is reflected here. And also we've had a lot of vacancies in our technology department. So this is primarily the function that we use in, in technology services. There's also some money there for contracted services that will be used in, in the future. I did discuss on function 81 about the maintenance tax notes and the monies that are restricted for that. Okay, so those will be rolled into the following year as well. Overall, and under the blue column, we do see a projected surplus and deficit area of 100,000. That means that we will be really close to breaking even this year. And that's wonderful news because for a budget that we have a 557 million dollar budget to come in almost at break even is, is really good news. And great budgeting and great decisions made. We began, we began the year with 166.7 million dollars in our fund balance. And we plan to end slightly under that at 166.6 million dollars. So our number of days in fund balance that we started the year was at 88.9. That's how we closed last year. And we anticipate at this time, based on the data available, that we'll close the year with 88.9 million, 88.9 days as well.
And I do want to just state that when we do, we typically do this forecast on or about the same timeframe in April. However, when we close out the year, I think in the last couple of years, we can note that we've, we've turned out to be in a better situation than we are. So the fact that we're, we're looking good right now, I think has, is a good indicator that we're probably going to be even in a better position as we close out the year in June. And we are starting to sweep funds as we stated last year in our efforts to identify efficiencies and contain some of our, our unexpended dollars. And not just spend them at the end of the year on, on maybe not planned expenditures aligned to our goals. What we've done is we're going to go ahead and start sweeping those dollars, which will then in turn supplement our, our fund balance at year-end. Trustee Cole, do you have a question?
I have more than one question. So we're almost 32 million dollars under what we budgeted, which at first glance is fantastic, right? But when I started, you know, having a little bit of heartburn when you mentioned the bus, the transportation situation that sparked this, what I'm about to say. So you mentioned that we're holding back on the capital replacement for our buses, although we do intend to do that in the future. Can you tell me more about that? Because on first glance, that seems unwise to me, especially given inflation right now that we're not buying any new buses.
Can I, let me explain. So we have a capital replacement plan. And so every year, the, the transportation department provides us a yearly plan on, based on the years, the age of the vehicles. He replaces certain vehicles yearly. What we do is, so we allocate the budget and dependent on the year, which year it is, he may purchase more buses than others. What we do is we take an average of the five-year plan that he gives us, and every year we allocate it into a fund balance. So that when the year, there's one year that he might need 2 million, where other years he might just need 600,000. So what we do is so that it's not such an impact to our budget on any given year, we reserve it and then we, we align it.
So we just got lucky this year and we had more new buses that are scheduled, I mean, less new buses that are scheduled to do like this year.
And it's my understanding, when, when did we do a significant overhaul of our bus fleet? It's been fairly recently, right?
So we did with our bond, with our 2016 bond, we purchased a significant number. But I can tell you that of, throughout our, regionally, we have the newest buses. We have a very new fleet of, of buses in place right now.
I just want to make sure that we're just not hitting the pause button this year.
No, that's a great question. We also received funding, if you recall, I believe it was a year ago that we received funding to help us replace them.
So we, it was a grant that allowed us to purchase buses and, and replace them with more fuel-efficient and environmentally better buses. And what they did is once we showed proof that we disabled those buses from ever being utilized again, they reimbursed us with a million dollars, almost a million dollars of funding.
Okay, and then on function 36, why are we spending, you know, a million less on extracurriculars than we funded?
So on function. I can share a little bit on that one. A good portion of that is related, function 36 is in extracurricular activities. Our coaching staff is part of that. One of our efforts this year to reduce our expenditures and really align our staffing was to avoid or go, move away from hiring retirees. And that generated a 500,000 dollars. So you do see savings here as well, based on some of our efficiency staffing approaches that we took this year.
Primarily in salaries, as Ms. Pineda.
And Dana, before you go on to the next one, if you don't mind, if we could go back to number 34, to the buses. I think this would be a good time too, to show our community that with that issue that we're going to be voting on. That maybe we, the school district, can use what we have into more. It would be a good, in other words, it would be a good public awareness campaign for ourselves as well as a community. That we're even willing to change to electric buses and stuff. Maybe, I don't know. Maybe this is a good time or not. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, no, please. If anybody else has questions, please jump in. And then function 41, the 1.3 note?
Function 41. So under function 41, our largest amount there is under payable, and so that accommodation of vacancies?
We also, as I shared, we, we've already, in. We also, as I shared, we, we've already initiated our process. We, we stated that we committed to identifying efficiencies to make sure our, our budget was streamlined. And we closed sixty-two positions this year, vacant positions throughout the, the central office departments. And that's where you see some of those savings.
I see, I see. Okay, and then the data processing on Function 53. Tell me about this two million dollar rebate.
Yes.
Follow what you were saying.
So that E-rate. It's E-rate, yes. So the E-rate is a discount program that is offered to school districts. And I'm not exactly sure if it's eighty percent or we're at ninety percent. But we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed. We always spend it first and then we get reimbursed. And it's primarily for internet services that we get. It's a program that's available to school districts.
So who reimburs us for that? Is it the?
The federal government.
Federal government.
Oh, but it's not a for sure thing, so that's.
Yeah, it's, it's an annual thing that we, we have.
But is the, I, I guess, to just piggyback on his question, does the amount that's reimbursed varies, right?
It could vary on our, our commitments. And I, I want to believe and you can confirm or, or negate, but that with extra funding, we have done a lot of projects. And I'm thinking that some of the costs that we've allocated may have turned around and come back to us through E-rate reimbursement.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not exactly clear on that, but what I can say also is that some of the expenses that we have qualify. Not everything qualifies, there's certain particular criteria for that. But it does vary from year to year, and it does depend on our investment as a district as well.
So that's why we don't build it into the budget, we just, you know.
It is in the budget, it's in the revenue budget. We, we budget it as revenue, because that's how it initially comes in. And then during the audit, we reclassify it. And that's the reason we have to do a budget amendment. And so Maria's numbers already have that budget amendment in there. That budget amendment will still come to you. And we're looking at some other budget amendments in May. So we're looking at increasing local taxes, increasing interest, decreasing state revenue, and probably increasing impact date. And then there'll be that E-rate budget amendment, and there'll be a budget amendment for debt service, for the debt service fund, to align the calendar year and the fiscal year. And there'll be a budget amendment to Function 99, where you see that negative in there right now. Because the expenses have been high from the, from the central appraisal district.
Even for us, huh?
We all have to pay.
Okay. Well, thank you. And, and if we can get some more movement on, you know, fully staffing our, you know, our IT department, it worries me that there's, you know, that we're saving that much money on such an essential service there. I mean, I'm all about saving money, obviously, but I know that's a lot.
Right, and, and really, I just want to be clear, it's not a money-saving, you know, attempt. It's really just, it's difficult to find those positions. I know that in the interim, we have contract, contracted out services so that we can bridge the gap on, on those, those pieces. But again, it's not an intentional cost-saving measure by any means.
If we're, if we're, you know, contracting, you know, outside the district to pick up this black third, is that, put it under a different, a different.
It would be the same function.
So I have some questions. Can you explain or talk through a little bit the restructuring on Function 13 for staff, curriculum and staff development? And that's the difference, the four million dollar difference?
On thirteen, so the four million is not all related to the split funding. That's a portion of that. But the, from my understanding, and Ms. Sagidis can clarify a little more, is the campus teaching, the campus teaching coaches used to be Function 13 in the previous year. From, it's my understanding. So then in this fiscal year, they've, to, to better serve the campuses and the needs, they have been split funded between Function 11 to help and cover in the classroom, and then thirteen to, to do their other duties. And so that has been a change, and that is not, that budget change is not reflected here. So that does need to be done so that I can realign it and show more reflection of the actual expense here.
So, so the reason is that, so if, if the CTC was not providing in-class support, then their salary would be completely funded by Function 13, am I correct? Because they are actually providing professional learning services ongoing every day to adults and teachers. Because I think right before I got here, they, there was a decision made to change the funding structure for the salaries, you know, for CTCs so that they were intervening with students as well as providing professional learning, ongoing, job embedded for teachers. And so some of that comes, I guess, from one function and the other, the other. As we move forward, it's coming through SCE funding, am I correct? And it would be back into Function 13.
Thirty, one hundred percent, right.
Sorry, Veda, what do you mean by SEC funding?
It's.
SCE is state com.
State compet.
Education, so the state gives us additional fund, or weighted, a higher weighted average for at-risk populations that they allocate the funds under state compet funds. And so that's for all our at-risk population. Our CTCs are coded under that.
Right, and the reason that we're moving them back to thirteen and they're, they're, they're going to be dedicated to providing that, you know, supporting teachers, is because with our entitlements, we're, we're providing funding for specific intervention positions so that those positions will be, you know, working with students to provide them additional time and support in the areas of math and reading, right? So.
So this really wasn't as related to professional development, which I guess could explain the variance with Function 11, where most of that variance came from.
So on the, on Function 36, I, I know that there was a significant cost savings by restructuring regard, regarding the coaches and how many coaches per student or per athlete. Are those, are we planning on reinvesting those funds into coaches with stipends or?
So we are currently reviewing the, the stipend listing as, as we were requested to do so. And so we are going to look and see what results from that review.
Okay. I, I do want caution to say that we don't necessarily do tit for tat in terms of, but we look at the overall budget to, to, this, this allows us to create space for us to think about future stipend increases, you know, for coaches and, and other job roles, you know, as.
And as part of that review, could we also get some comparisons from other school districts, regionally and statewide? And just because I want to make sure that as we approach it, we are competitive and wanting to recruit the best coaches. I often get feedback that coaches can't come into this district because they just make so much more in other districts, so.
That is part of that review, that and the analysis and the considerations, the factors that are being considered.
And then Function 53, I'm going to, you know, share a lot of trustee call sentiments regarding just being a really alarming number, the variance. Part of why that concerns me too is it seems like, and I've mentioned this before, but our, sort of the leaning into having, for example, librarians take some of the role of what a technologist might, concerns me. So I don't know if that's another place that we can probably allocate more money to recruit. Because at this point, it just feels like we're constantly in dire streets with our IT department. And the further behind we get, the further concerning it becomes, especially when it comes to security breaches, data breaches, students having, I mean, students really relying on, on devices every single day for their work at this point, such a flipped classroom that I.
That number is concerning. Real quick though, I mean, I do want to clarify, because I, I feel like there's this perception that we're requiring librarians to do work that's not part of what a librarian should do. And that's not the case. We have library standards that were adopted by the state two years ago. And we do not see evidence across the board that we are aligned with what the state says librarians should be doing in terms of servicing children. And so I'm not going to say that our, our librarians are less than or that they're not doing good work, because they are. But we are realigning their job role to align with what the state says and has been adopted a couple of years ago in terms of how librarians work has shifted with the dawn of additional, you know, technology. And, and, and in many cases, in many school districts, they're no longer even called librarians. They're called media specialists. And your library is no longer called a library. It's called, you know, kind of a, a media space, and it's, it's very open. And so again, as we shift, you know, to those pieces, so it's not necessarily that they're being asked to do things because we have a lack of, of personnel in another area. So I want to make sure that we're clear and not listing those two things up.
By, by state, we mean TASB?
No, I'm talking about the state, the State Board of Education.
Or SBOE?
Yes, the State Board of Education.
So, yes, and, and realigning towards having a sort of data centers or, you know, that's, I, I think that there's always room for realignment. But I just want to make sure that our, in terms of our values of how we approach literacy, that we're not creating any of that. But that aside, even without that, that conversation being a part of it, I mean, I, I do get concerned that from a security standpoint with our IT department, maybe we're, if it's so hard to recruit, maybe there can be something that we can do financially to, to help that out. I don't know if that analysis is being.
Well, I think that what we can provide to the board is what the vacancies are. Like in, in other words, since Mr. Veda has been on board, how many vacancies have we, have we filled? Whether there's been any realignment in terms of the structure of, you know, how he's organized the department, and what vacancies are critical and remaining so that the board has a deeper understanding of, of where we are with that. So I think the key is just providing Mr. Veda the opportunity to assess and determine what realignment might be needed to identify if there are some deficiencies. And number two, look at what vacancies have maybe been long-term. And then obviously, the, the pay is something we'll be looking at to, to do them.
And then the last one that I have on this is in 81. I know that Ms. Sagidis and I have been talking about this recently, but a majority of that budget amendment, or a good deal of it, I guess half of it, at least half of it, is related to the El Paso High School project.
That's almost sixteen, seventeen million.
Can you talk a little bit about how those costs might be changing because there has been a significant time span between when that was originally, those specs were originally created versus now? I mean, what are we looking at in terms of costs, cost difference for the same, the same specifications?
I would have to defer that to facilities. What I can do is have them provide an update for this week to give you an update on where they are and what they're.
Yeah, so that we can see is, if, you know, because I know that that was allocated. I know that the bid was just secured in, I think it was in October. There's already been, you know, contractor approved, and, and the process is in motion. But I understand that we'll get, you know, some more information from the facilities department in terms of any anticipated, you know, uptick in cost. Just because we've, we've seen, based on inflation, that those, those impacts, you know, where we are.
Yeah.
In terms of facilities and instruction.
And I just want to make sure that we're not, that we understand that the safety piece of this and that we're not, you know, based with a place where we have to make a decision about, you know, structure, structural deficiencies because the cost, that cost, those costs may have gone up very significantly. So if we could have just a real robust understanding of what we're looking at.
Is this, is this the roof and the facade thing that we, like, four years ago?
And I, and I plan to put an update for the board in this week's board update in terms of the timeline that we're looking at. And then if the cost analysis information is available, I'll include it. But if it's not, then the following week we'll, we'll get that information to you.
Yeah.
But in terms of the timeline, I will have that in the, in the update this week.
And if we could just be updated, you know, a lot more frequently about this. I mean, the, the specs for this preceded my time on the board, and I've been here two years. And so kind of trustee, trustee, trustee call said, whoa, because again, we're looking at four years. And so I think we just really need to be a little bit more consistent with the updates so that we can, I mean, I really don't know, four years is a really long time, and.
I think we can expect a fairly significant increase in the cost.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what worries me.
Approved by the board.
And so we're, also, it would be nice to know as part of those updates, you know, why it's taken four years, what was the, what were the issues? I mean, how can we avoid really spending more money in the future on these very critical, really a safety issue, you know? And I just mentioned this briefly, I mean, we don't want to be waiting for the moment when something bad happens to a kid because we've been working on something for four years. So I would really love to know also why we're four years in and it hasn't, work hasn't even started.
Well, I would say that work has started in terms of the, the process that you go to. Now, started in terms of brick and mortar started?
Right.
No, but in terms of securing a contractor and getting through, you know, those hurdles, yes. But I understand, and again, I don't have all of the information, we will get it to you. When I arrived and I was made aware of the situation, I understand that the first challenge that the district had was that there were few contractors that were willing to respond to the bid because of the historical nature of the building. But we were able to overcome that, like I said, because we went out for bid again, and we've been able to secure, you know, a contractor or company. So, but we'll get you the full details so that the whole board is apprised of any increase in costs, you know, I guess the circumstances that have delayed the project, and then where we are in terms of our current timeline and when we anticipate that the work.
No, I mean, just, just because I don't want to, you know, that community where I'm scared. There have been mitigations that have already been put in place to be able to secure the danger of falling rocks and all that. Obviously, those are temporary mitigations, and I don't think anybody's anticipating it's going to take this long. But there are mitigations that are, I think we've put in screening over some of those, those areas where we have the loose rock and all that. And so there has been that work that has been done in time. But there's no doubt that the, the complete project needs to be addressed. And, and I do, I recall that, you know, it's very, because of the, of the, of the age of the building and its historic value, there's very few contractors out there who will focus on those types of remediations and stuff. Just a few who.
So may I interject? I, I appreciate everybody's commentary with regards to this particular contract.
Ms. Collins, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little better.
So I just, I appreciate everyone's commentary with regards to the contract and what's going on at El Paso High School. And just a friendly reminder of what we're posted for and the meetings that happen. So it's for budgetary discussions. So with regards to how this is related to the budget, and your question, trustee Haddani, is it related to the budget? I appreciate that, and that's in line what we're posted for. But we will need to bring this issue back at a properly posted meeting to discuss that. And just, just a brief reminder with regards to any other issues that might come up in that, that regard. Thank you.
Can you finish, Leah?
Yes.
Okay. And regards to item number fifty-three, I understand, is it only the librarians through this line item we're going to make the adjustments that you're speaking of?
Function fifty-three is technology.
Technology, but when you were speaking of librarian, this is when you brought up.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because I didn't want to mix the fact that, you know, the, the perception that librarians are being asked to do the work of technology because of these vacancies, because that's not the case. So I was just trying to clarify that perception.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. How's the, I guess the thirty million, that's, that's considered, you know, a surplus? I know a lot of that is allocations and rollover costs. Do we have an idea of what's actually been allocated or can be classified as savings?
Prelimarily, I'm thinking it's about three point seven million.
Three point seven?
Because addition to the, is that just bottom line or?
So, so we have identified as, as we reported, thirty-one point seven million. We rolled forward in budget about twenty-eight point. We rolled forward in budget about twenty-eight point one million dollars. So the difference between those two is about three point seven million. And as I shared, I think it's very preliminary and I do believe there will be more savings.
The bulk of those you said was, uh...
Construction. So when we did the...
Sorry, the savings is, is personnel, correct?
Personnel, yes. Could we move on to the next, oh...
Questions? Yeah. Um, so on the IT stuff, is there, uh, I think trustee Hidani was saying, you know, getting more competitive with salaries, but IT's function, I know there's a lot of remote IT jobs. Has that been consideration that has been taken for this or is there a practice that has been done in, in the district to do something like that to entice more people? As like another job benefit?
So we have, uh, other than the timeframe when we worked from home and we had that opportunity, uh, we have not engaged in that conversation, uh, about what jobs might be feasible for work from home. We did some conversation with other districts here locally to see if that's something that they would consider. Um, it's challenging because when you work for, when you're in the educational setting, it becomes about the comparables to other positions. And so I think that that's something that, based on research, probably beyond even El Paso, to see if there's opportunity there for those jobs. Uh, it is work that we know can be done from home, so it's a matter of identifying what protocols we could put in place to account for the, for the work.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking, we really need to think outside the box here, right? And I'm not super comfortable with just doing it external. I think that's a Band-Aid for now, um, and contracting that out. So it just kind of concerns me to continue moving in that direction. And if we could entice people and think outside the box, because we can't find people, this could be a big one, um, in such a changing job market and what is post-pandemic, I think that's a, a big deal to consider, especially for this specific, um, specific position, right? I'm not saying let's get virtual teachers because that's a whole nother thing, but for IT, I see how that could make sense.
Well, that in conjunction with, I think that the other piece that, um, would allow us to kind of really analyze, because I want us to, to know that sometimes in the IT world, contracting, contracting out for those specific services, services is actually a better, a better way to get the work done. Because sometimes it's seasonal work, sometimes it's not work that requires us to take on an entire employee with benefits and all of the other things that come with that. So I think that as we're, we're working with Mr. Vivendi and his leadership, again, that's what I'm saying, as he's, I, I want to get a good sense of how he's realigned the department, what areas of work we would be better served, you know, to contract out versus critical vacancies that we need to fill. That would maybe require us to think more outside the box because we do need permanent people, you know, in those areas. So, um, because that, that market also, in terms of technology needs, not necessarily just for the private sector, but for us here in the educational space, you know, shift, ebb and flow as well. So, um, but yes, I, I do think that there are things that we need to begin to consider when we do need permanent employees who could benefit from some remote, um...
And I, and I believe that Mr. Vivendi brings the experience to be able to evaluate the jobs and, and identify really what type of job would be best.
And you're getting rid of function thirteen is what you're saying, right?
No, we're not eliminating. What we're saying is...
Restructuring it.
Because of the restructure of, uh, the role, it, it impacted the, the function because that's where they work.
And on any of that, that's not gonna, that's just really restructuring, there's no risks that we're, that we are going to see because of that, it's just more efficiency?
Better alignment and focus on the role.
Okay. And then the other thing, um, that I had as the librarians were getting brought up with, um, function fifty-three, I, and I had this conversation with Dr. Hidani a few years back, where we are keeping the librarians under the state standards. Um, and, and my, my worry about that is that we're picking and choosing what standards to implement because we're behind on that and we are not staffing libraries appropriately and that's in the standards as well, right? So if I remember correctly, any school that has over seven hundred kids needs two librarians. And a few years ago, we started, and I've, I've said this before, so it's nothing new that I'm saying, but, um, we started closing out positions as librarians were retiring. It happened at Austin, it happened at El Paso High, it happened at other schools around and we just eliminated the position as cost savings, but now we're not following those standards. So as we're thinking about the budget and we're aligning librarians with the standards, I think we also need to consider the staffing standards that are part of what the state is putting out.
Right. Well, I would just share with you, I mean, and this is going to come directly from me as a superintendent, I'm not going to cherry pick standards because as a school district, I want us to be on the far end of the exemplary standards all the way down the line, from staffing to whatever it is, services, um, our, our librarians provide, you know, to their campuses and to their, to the students. So, you know, we'll go back and, you know, take a closer look at that to make sure, but, you know, hear me clearly, we're not going to cherry pick standards because we want to be the best that we can be in every area, you know, that the state, you know, requires, you know, and not necessarily just for librarians, but in, you know, and, and it's a process because when you get standards, the first step is to assess and evaluate, how close are we aligned to the standards of the state? And so obviously, we're going to be focused on the deficiencies and developing a timeline of how we address each standard. So by a given point in time, whether that takes us two years, uh, or three, or however long, you know, the timeline is, that by that time, you know, we're in good stead with, with all of the standards that the state, you know, expects. So, but you make a good point, let's go back and look at that to make sure that there's no, that our staffing configurations are being addressed as well as job roles and all of the services that we provide via our librarians.
So with, before we're finished with this section, I'd like one more question.
And I, I just want to make it clear, I know that some of our testing is short on time or, um, so we do have several items, I guess...
And, and you know, we ran into this last time. I don't think these workshops being scheduled this, at this time is convenient. I think it's very convenient for the district, but it's not convenient for the board because we all work and we have different meetings that we're going to. So as we're looking at these budget workshops, I, I think we need to consider that more and, um, we are a working board, I think all of us except for one person works and so it's just really difficult to be doing these workshops so often. Uh, we need to have the workshops, but having them in the middle of day at a time that's convenient for the district and not convenient for the board is just not working.
For clarity, this is convenient for me.
Well, which is why I just want to share that I, I'm, I, I, as a superintendent, my assumption was that this was the convenient time for the majority of the board. If that has shifted and changed, then I would certainly be open to adjusting the time because I do not want to present a hardship, you know, for, for, for the board. Um, and so, but, um, I do want you all to answer, your questions to be answered. So Ms. Evnandis, please.
We can spend hours if you'd like. I can be here and share as much as you need.
Well, we need to get back on track on this topic. We do have, I do and no others do as well, so.
This is just a, a simple question, I think. Number thirteen, when, what is our goal to know when the adjustments about the alignment of the, when would this, uh, be reflected in those, those changes? Where, where are they going to be?
So we, after this forecast, the process usually is that then the following month, I'll come to the board with an end of year, uh, budget amendment and that's where we align so that we don't have any deficits if we identify.
No, but I'm saying, we'll already have all those realignments for personnel by then?
So the, the, the result in those, so this is recurring year budget?
Right.
So yes, that's why you see those, that, that, uh...
The realignment, Ms. Ms. Evnandis of the, the job roles that you're referring to in function thirteen, those would impact the fiscal, our, our next budget, not this current budget.
Okay.
So if we move on to the next section, it's the legislative update. And, and again, it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but you all have your, your presentation. Uh, we, I wanted to start with, with the golden pennies and the copper pennies because that was a question that brought, asked of us last meeting. So, um, Mr. Walt Byers will kind of share and we'll, we'll try to do as an abbreviated presentation that, so that the questions can come and we, we still meet our timeline.
We're on page nine. And, and this was a question from last month and if you recall, there's, there's two tiers of funding, state funding tier one, which is basic funding, which is based on student data. And then tier two, uh, which is enrichment funding, which is based on, uh, local tax effort. And so we had two TREs in the past, totally in thirteen cents, and those thirteen cents now have become eight, eight golden pennies and five copper pennies. And, uh, the, the reason, the difference in what they call them is just based on the amount of money they generate. The golden pennies generate a lot more money than the copper pennies. And right now, the golden penny is worth ninety-eight dollars and fifty-six cents per weighted average daily attendance, what they call WADA, W A D A. And you go, and the copper penny is worth half of that, it's worth forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per... Now, if we go into the next slide, the next page, uh, possible, possible changes to foundation scope funding at the legislature. One of them is the increase in the golden penny from ninety-eight fifty-six to one twenty-six twenty-one. Uh, that's what they're currently talking about and they've even said that it could change from that, it could even go higher. But that, uh, that increase would generate about fourteen million dollars. So like, for instance, this year in tier one, we're going to get about forty-one million dollars in tier one. On the template right now, it would be fifty-five million dollars in tier one. Another possible increase is an increase to the basic allotment. This is a different, different bill. And currently, the basic allotment is six thousand one sixty and it's going to be by fifty dollars, it's six thousand two ten, and that would generate about three point three million dollars. Then, uh, property tax relief, there's a lot of talk at the state about property tax relief. Both the House and Senate want to, uh, increase it by about, but want to provide about seventeen billion dollars in property tax relief. But they both, they have two different methods if you, there, you know, there's two. So the first one, what we have there is the fifteen cents, that's in HB one, where the House wants to, uh, increase the tax rate compression by fifteen cents. Now, that wouldn't be just a straight fifteen cents, it would be again, that formula, or depending on your property value growth, you might give, you know, one district might have to decrease their, their M and O rate by fifteen, another might do it by ten cents. That's what that's based on. But all, all these, uh, changes to all these, uh, different types of property tax relief are revenue neutral for the state funding because as they decrease the taxes, they'll increase state funding.
Which was the, the comment, which I have ever mentioned, uh, earlier, when we noted that because our local taxes, our, our property values were even higher, we generated more revenue, so the state revenue decreased. And that's what that statement means. The property, uh, any property tax relief given, given to our community taxpayers, uh, will be offset to a certain degree of, through the state funding.
But not a one-to-one ratio, correct?
Not necessarily, yeah.
Do you have an idea what that ratio is?
It, it depends on, we don't know yet what, you know, what's going to happen.
It, it depends on how they adjust the basic allotment associated with, you know, funding for education, right? Not only that, but even if they do increase the basic allotment, what we're seeing in many of the bills is that there are specific provisions where if we get an increase in the basic allotment, they have to go to specific things and we're just not free to use that money to, to, to support the budget.
That's the last bullet there.
Yeah, sorry. Does it, does it go your thunder, Walt?
So it shows the different, the different requirements that might, might be brought.
Well, and some of them are for good, good reason. I mean, there's been a lot of, of discussion, um, at the state level and there was a teacher task force that came together that's been doing a lot of research and a lot of work. So you're going to find several of the bills, I think it's Senate Bill nine and House Bill eleven, that have a lot of provisions, um, that are associated with the recommendations coming out of that task force to support reducing teacher workload, retention and, uh, I would say compensation for teachers.
And then on the next slide, additional homestead exemption?
DG eleven.
This is a Senate Bill, uh, Senate Bill three, where they're talking about increasing the exemption from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand. No, I'm sorry, that was in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-five to forty-four. Now they're, they're talking about increasing it to seventy thousand in twenty-twenty-three. And it would be the same as last, last time where, uh, there would be a constitutional amendment that would go to the voters in November, then once it's approved, it would be retroactive to twenty-three, twenty-four. And then it says there, the tax rate of a dollar twenty, so we don't know what our tax rate's going to be. But if we were at a dollar twenty, it would mean, uh, three hundred and sixty dollars additional exemption for a homestead. And that's on every homestead. Okay. Then also, uh, one of the differences, the House bill has, on the next slide...
Page twelve.
Has a five percent appraisal cap. But right now, the appraisal cap is only on a homestead and it's a ten percent. But the House is talking about giving a five percent for everything, for all real property. And this would really be a big change, uh, the kind of limit of the, of these here, because real property is residential and commercial land and building improvements. And real property makes about, makes up about ninety percent of the total tax base in the state. And I don't know if they're going to do that.
An appraisal cap meaning they can't, you know, increase property value by more than ten percent right now for homesteads, but they're thinking about dropping it down to five percent for everything.
Right now, if your, if your house is homesteaded, that's the cap, but if it's not homesteaded, it, it could be more than that. And then, but on that slide, uh, there's, this is a forecast, it's almost the same as last time, we're going to do very many changes. Um, down there on the assumptions, we still have the four percent property value growth, but we did meet with the CAD in early March and they gave us some preliminary, some pre- preliminary numbers, because they don't have to, they're not going to give us the preliminary values until the end of April. But their preliminary number showed about eleven percent growth, but this is before any protests. And they kind of told us, you know, with the factor in, um, a, a decline of about six percent on that eleven percent. And right now, it looks like we could get six percent growth this year and depending on what we see in April. So that your next forecast will have that in there and hopefully it will have something from the state, some better numbers from the state. And then that's all I have right now.
Any questions on this section? If you need to keep you updated?
Stay tuned to the...
Yes.
Give me the answer.
So the next section is just a, a, an update on, uh, our budget development. So our budget development consists of both operational allocations as well as our personnel or compensation, which is a very crucial and critical component of our budget. Um, so as far as the budget development update, Ms. Evnandis in Washington, we will have a overview of what we've been doing. The team has been very busy.
So, good afternoon. Um, so some of the items that we're working on right now is that all budget proposals have been entered into the system, so that's the campuses and the departments. So what we're doing right now, at the time the budget staff is doing, is reviewing for account accuracy so that we can avoid any future amendments or, or, uh, budget transfers. We're reviewing new initiatives, we're identifying those to ensure that they align to the, the strategic blueprint. Uh, we're also reviewing the capital replacement plans. Um, we spoke a little bit about that earlier and what's included in those capital replacement plans is, um, larger purchases such as vehicles, you know, the buses is a good example as well, and major repairs and equipment. Uh, we're also reviewing the contract listing. We've tasked all the departments to provide us with all the contracts, um, that they have within their budgets to ensure that, again, they're properly, properly aligned to the strategic blueprint as well. And then we're also working on the district-wide allocations and what we include in there are substitutes. For example, we'll allocate from the central office our substitutes for the teachers', um, teacher retire, retirement, ensuring that we budget enough for, for those that retired and then some of the benefits. Uh, the other thing that we're looking at is the state program allotments to ensure... Uh, the other thing that we're looking at is the state program allotments, to ensure that we are, uh, budgeting at the spend requirement. Um, in addition to that, we've been meeting with all the cabinet members, and they're, and they're reviewing, um, their respective, uh, departments, the departments that report to them to review, uh, again, to ensure that everything is strategically aligned. And then we're also collaborating with the human resource department to reconcile the staffing. Uh, one example is like the CTCs, the role is different for twenty-twenty-four, so we need to make sure that we go into the system and change the account code to avoid any future amendments. Um, and also ensuring that the campuses, all the, the staffing, um, is aligned in the system, to ensure the campuses have what they, uh, what they need for staffing.
And as we move on, uh, speaking of compensation and staffing, um, this Cortez will give you a brief overview of, uh, where we are currently with our actual compensation, uh, levels.
So, uh, good afternoon, so as, as Martha mentioned, you know, compensation, we know is gonna be a crucial, crucial and critical aspect of the, the budget process. And, uh, it's always a really important conversation, not just for you as board members and representing the community, but also for our employees wanting to know, you know, where we stand. So, uh, I wanna just take you back to Ms. Ayvedra's, uh, beginnings with the district, and, and her first step was to go out and, and really listen to all stakeholders, and specifically, we heard from our employees and understood how important salary was at that point, especially, you know, returning from the, and returning from where the employee had, the, where the district has been in terms of compensation. So there was a lot of work to be done, uh, last year at, at the point where Ms. Ayveda came on board. And so, you know, as I mentioned, she quickly came in and met with stakeholders, and we heard from them, and we knew that, you know, there was gonna be some work to be done. And so what we identified was that what we really needed was a su- sustainability of systems, so that we could look at compensation from a long-term standpoint, and not just from the short term, what type of raise are we gonna give for twenty-two twenty-four? Well, you're really looking at, uh, having high hopes, and thanks to the board, you approved, uh, uh, the highest, uh, salary increase in the region, and took that leap of faith that we were gonna do this, knowing that there's a lot of work to be done be- behind that raise, not just in efficiencies, but al- also allowing us opportunity to pursue raises moving forward. So that work really remains ongoing, to ensure that we're able to sustain a plan that takes care of our employees. Uh, and also emphasizing that it's not just salaries, we've also looked at, in listening to our employees, we've, uh, enriched our, uh, employee benefits, we've also enhanced our wellness program by creating what we call the healthy eating campaign. Uh, so for those of you that have not, uh, or you're not aware of it, I would really encourage you to, you can find it on social media on our website, but really promoting employee wellness in terms of having employees take time to take care of themselves, whether it's exercise, uh, we have art classes, we had cooking, cooking classes, we have hiking, so really engaging our employees to take the time to take care of themselves. So we're looking at really, the employee experience, uh, is inclusive, it's not just compensation, but, but really looking at employees taking the necessary step to take care of themselves. So I just really wanted to point that out, because that really started with, uh, Ms. Ayveda's teaching, teaching scars on, on really hearing employees, and the board really acknowledging the importance of addressing compensation. Uh, so as we move forward, what we would like to do today, just kind of lay the foundation of where we are with teacher salary in comparison to the region. So if you look at your current slide, you'll see, like I mentioned, we did, you know, we moved the needle. And so if you look here, we're, we're basically at, uh, number seven in the region. And the median salary i- is fifty-six, five fifty, the median represents the average of the, the twelve district, regional districts, uh, that have been compared. And so that, that puts us in a, in an area where we are comparable, but again, we need to make sure that we're, the staying long-term plans to continue to remain competitive. So as mentioned earlier, I think, just something to note, is that after we passed our compensation package, I think that there were, um, school districts, even after they adopted their budget, that went back to adjust their compensation further, um, leading up to the start of the school year. So, cause I know that at the time that budgets were adopted, we were, I believe, fourth, right?
So, we are fourth.
We are fourth.
We are.
I just heard her say seven. Well, I'm, what, I'm referring to the starting salary as comparable to our, with our.
With our peer districts.
With our peer districts. And so those peer districts, if you look here, includes Fort Bend and Anthony ISD. In addition to Isla de Anzo, which are regional, with the exception, and the only reason it included Fort Bend was so I could see a comparison as how far we off to other regions of the state.
Yes.
But in terms of our region, can you clarify?
Yes.
Where are we, if there's twelve school districts in this region, what number are we?
And we're number four in the region.
So, and if, before I go to the next slide, just to, uh, we answered that we will be evaluating stipends across the district. Uh, that, and that would include the, the athletics, uh, we also evaluate all pre-grads, uh, to ensure there's any, amongst the pay grade. So this next slide just gives you a visual of where the entire pay table for teachers, what it looks like. Uh, so if you, if you see this, the orange line indicates El Paso ISD salary, and your blue line is your local market median. And so as you can see here, uh, we've made some strides. Now, something I want to point out is if you look at the, uh, twenty to twenty-five year experienced teachers, we're, uh, pretty competitive in that area, so the needle moves up as teachers gain experience.
If, with the exception of, and I just wanna call your attention as well, if you look at the mid, right there, from ten to fifteen years, is where there's work for us to do as a school district.
So in that area, we, uh, we did look at that, and that's something we'll focus on, we have approximately seventeen percent of our teachers in that category, between ten and fifteen years, and so we'll look at where we can make some shifts there.
I would like to mention that, uh, our average teacher experience is thirteen point seven years, and at the state average, it's eleven years, so that's just a comparison.
So we have a higher percentage of teachers on the higher end, which fall what, between, uh?
Thirteen years. Well, between that little group.
And the state average is eleven point two, you said?
State, eleven years.
So, but if I look at that, like, where you start to see, uh, go back is in the, you know, I would say seventeen and beyond, right?
So I know that, I don't know if you recall from prior years, we, we were, we were below, with our, our, our salaries, uh, became less competitive as, as our teachers had more experience, and we've shifted in, in how we, um, structure our, our formula, the years, so that the, the more experienced teachers are getting the, the higher rate.
With the exception of that one.
And yes, now we have to work on that.
And I think that's the key of making sure that you are maintaining, by having a consistent evaluation. Because as we shift, so do other districts, so we wanna make sure that you're continuously looking at the specific. Well, and I also just wanna note that as the legislature continues to have conversations about the basic allotment and all of that, um, some of the things that are proposed in some of these bills are also that we adjust our teachers' salary schedules, and they're, you know, including specific provisions for that at the state level as well, so.
So the next slide is important, because sometimes you look at a fixed number and, and identify where you fall in the region, as we talked about earlier, number four, uh, we're number four in the region, um, but if you look at this, and looking at the top three school districts, so, uh, in addition to the, the employee retention stipend, they could provide three thousand dollars under the HSA. So that, that brings us to number two, uh, if you are including the, the three top districts.
And, and I guess we are approaching this graphic to kind of share with you and, and share with our community that when we talk about employee compensation and, and benefits, it's not this, the check that they take home, but then a- additional, just that's not just the salary that they receive, but any additional allocations or benefits that we allocate. And, and so that's where we did this graphic. If you recall, last year, we also did, uh, at the budget process, when we said it was a seven percent increase, but then when you considered the retention stipends and, and the healthcare, HSA allocation, um, they really received more like a twelve percent raise in, in that. So this, this graphic is just to share that approach in, in.
At, so really, when we think compensation, we're looking at the salary, all of the benefits, a- all of those pieces, so that we look at all encompassing, where are we in terms of what we offer our employees when they make decisions to come to El Paso ISD? So that's why I thought that this was important. You also heard me share that we're looking at additional benefits, you know, the wellness, you know, initiatives, uh, because sometimes people choose to work for an employer that, you know, where they know that your employee, you know, cares about you, and there are things, uh, that they offer you that, that are beneficial to you in, in those ways as well. Uh, specifically, the extended day piece is something that I'm pushing really hard for, because I know that, um, as we scale that, it will be a significant benefit for our employees in a number of different ways, and which, which, which may increase their take-home pay if they're not having to pay, uh, significant amounts for childcare if we provide it in-house. There's also something to be said about having your child close to you while you're at work, um, and not having that worry of having to leave, you know, to go pick them up, or having to leave earlier, so you can drop them off before you get to your workplace. So those are all of the things that we're considering, as we consider all of the investments that we make, not necessarily just for our strategic blueprint and the way that we operate, but things that truly benefit our employees.
Also provide a, a boost of education for financial wellness, to help employees really how to plan for their future in terms of their retirement and supplemental retirement.
All right, so, the reveal, no, just joking.
And along that, I, I really wanna put in a plug for that, uh, HSA, because now that I'm retired, for those employees, they may not think that they're gonna need it, or it's gonna help them, but it does. And I was in, in the gap between sixty and sixty-two, I'm openly admitting my age, but, I mean, there, there was a time there where you, I really, 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 uh, took advantage of that HSA, uh, uh, card, and it pays for a lot of things, and for others, not just for yourself, but for your whole family. But besides medicines, it pays for a lot of other things, believe it or not, that you guys wouldn't think that they would, and that's really saved me, and it, it helps when you, you may not see it when you're young, but let me tell you, once that, that account grows big, and a thousand is significant, because I even just looked into it yesterday. As a retiree, I can't put more than a thousand of my own money into the account that I had, you know, I had a, a balance, and it carried over. Um, and so a thousand for me was just what I needed at the, I mean, hopefully it'll carry me for this year, and for other years, too. But that's about eighty-three dollars a month that I'm saving, coming up with a thousand.
Plus, it's all tax-free.
What's that?
It's all tax-free also.
And it's all tax-free, that's what I meant to say.
I agree with her, I, I'm really proud that our district does this, absolutely.
So the next slide that you see is, um, calculations on, on different scenarios. Again, this is, uh, preliminary, we, we are still finalizing our, our numbers and obviously waiting to see how the state lands on, on their funding for our district. However, I wanted to set the stage, so that it gives you an idea of where and what it would cost different, at different levels of, of, uh, percentage increases. So this provides you, the, the, the document is broken into, uh, three different, uh, pay sources. And we're gonna focus just on the very top one, cause that's what impacts the general operating fund, that is what you would be, uh, approving in June.
Martha, before you go, I just wanna be very clear, we're showing you this just to give you a taste of numbers and what, you know, what every percentage equates to. Please do not walk away with the understanding that we're limiting our research in terms of compensation to one, two, or three percent. This is just to give you an understanding of the numbers that we're talking about with one, two, and three.
Correct.
We're running models in a number of different ranges, so.
So when you look, and I'm gonna focus just on the very top section, the general operating. So you, we've broken it down by the different employee groups, and then it gives you the number of employees in those specific groups, and then the cost of the current salary. This is with that seven percent raise by four, that, that we gave this year. So our, our expenses are at four hundred and nineteen million, um, currently. We have three different boxes that we're showing you, and we're showing you with a one percent increase, a two percent increase, and a three percent. And I'm gonna leave the one percent alone, and I'll, I'll jump into the two percent. So if the district were to opt into a two percent pay increase, the starting salary for teachers would be fifty-seven thousand, seven fifty, which would be an increase from the, what did we say, fifty-six, fifty-six, nine seventy-five? That cost of that pay increase would be an additional nine point five million, almost nine point six million dollars to the budget. If we look at option three, which is a three percent pay increase, that would be a starting pay for teachers of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. So that's a difference from the fifty-six, nine seventy-five, where we currently are. And that cost to our, our budget would be twelve million dollars, uh, additional dollars to sustain that. So I wanted to share this with you, just as a, just to kind of give you an understanding of where and how much would it take to actually give a compensation increase. This is just the salary increase, and I'm gonna now just refer to that three percent. If three percent was what we were considering, and that was your discussion, uh, point right now, it's twelve million, but we would also, because we're also doing stipend, uh, analysis to ensure that we're doing, that we're competitive, we're also evaluating different groups of employees to ensure, we talked about technology, I mean, there's just.
Market value.
Market value for a lot of our, um, pay groups. So in reality, we're looking at more of a fifteen mil- million dollar allocation, is what we're, uh, estimating if we were to consider a three million. Again, the higher the increases, I'm sorry, three percent, yes, and the higher the increase, the more, um, the cost for the, the future increases. So I just wanted.
What this gives you, though, is, if you look at that, it gives you, basically, you go up a little over three million dollars with each percentage increase that you, that, 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 that you go up. And so really, the, the purpose to show you this model is to make that apparent, but I wanna be clear, that doesn't necessarily mean we're not running other models with other compensation percentages in mind. This just gives you a good, you know, from six to nine to, to twelve, it's about three to three point five million every time you increase by a percentage, right?
I'd also like to see the long-term projections of what that means, because as we saw with the last budget increase of seven, it may have impacted us nine million one year, and the cost there, we could cover it at a couple million, but then it balloons, so I'd like to really get that as well. If we ever show something like this, a long-term projection would be very.
So it, we will.
Well, in, in May.
In May, I'll be bringing you the, a three-year forecast, because of course, we're in a different scenario as far as expenses go, because of the compensation increase we gave.
But I, I'm gonna share with you that we are in a good position, uh, and as I shared with you when, when we were having this discussion last time, uh, although your three-year forecast is show, uh, a deficit if we did not do anything, we're drawing them down, that deficit, you know, significantly. So.
About two point three.
That you want.
So that, that, let me understand that, cause I know we, it brings down the deficit, but when the question I asked is how much in savings did we realize? It was two point three, does that include all the savings that has occurred since our last budget cycle? Two point three million, or is there additional savings that were not accounted for in that, uh, first, uh, spreadsheet?
So we, we have reduced, we've, we've done an, an analysis, and we've reduced in different areas, that like I, I mentioned to you earlier, we forecast with certain assumptions, that certain budgets are gonna be expended in its entirety. So, uh, when we reduced our closed positions earlier this year, we had a total of nine million that we identified. So, but remember that we rolled forward funds, and some of those funds have been expended. So this forecast that we shared includes the budget that we adopted, plus additional money that we rolled forward. So that's where that, it's, I know it's very convoluted, but when, when it's all said and done, um, that the budget is still intact, which means we've offset some of those roll-forward funds that we brought in from last year within our existing budget, so that's where those savings are being.
So a board update with the numbers, you, like, when you say we've done significant savings, to understand where that money's being saved and how, I think would be truly helpful. to understand where that money's being saved and how, I think would be truly helpful.
Well, we'll send it to, out to you again, and then I do want to, I know that we, we didn't have this specifically in here, but our fund balance is still solid.
It's still at a, uh, right now, it's still projected at eighty-nine days.
And I, and that was gonna be sort of my question. So originally, when we did this seven percent, um, compensation increase last year, it was a twenty-nine million dollar projected budget shortfall for next year, right?
Two years.
Yeah, two years down from, from last year, that, which would be for next year. What, where do you see that?
Two years from, so there was, so this year, we were gonna be balanced. Next year was a, about three, almost four million dollars, three million and change, and it was the following year.
Okay, so where do you anticipate that?
So now we need to run the numbers with the actual data that we have, and that's the conversation that we'll have in May.
But we also need to factor in, too, that, the, and I point to you, Mr. Byers, because I sent my property tax some information, and they're increasing, or rather, the homestead exemption is going from forty to seventy. Somebody like me, um, I had shown you in my example, in the example, that I'm not gonna be paying that much in the school district. So, we're not gonna have, yes, maybe there's gonna be some other revenue revenues that may offset it, but, uh, people that are, uh, like, for me, I just won't be paying that much.
Right. Well, but, but that's where what we shared, uh, comes into play. So when property values, as, you know, as a result of, of, uh, homestead exemptions or, you know, those, those pieces, um, when we get less revenue from that, the state does offset somewhat, right? A- again, it's not a tit-for-tat, but, but there's not a significant loss, right? So what I would love to see when we, as we're having these conversations, especially regarding compensation, is, um, creative, creative stipends and different scenarios. I know, and I'm not creative, but I know, um, you know, last year, we had the parental leave. Um, what would it be to increase that? What would it be to have stipends for hard staff positions, um, wellness days, uh, for, for employees? Uh, what else, you know, just?
Well, the extended day, because it's, you know, again, i- i- it's, it's a service, right?
And that, and I, I think that's one of the best things happening in this district. So I, I mean, I, I'm really excited about that initiative. But if we could have all of that sort of bundled up, um, so we can see what it would be to, you know, have things that are going to entice our employees to come to our district and stare in our district in other ways. Um, I mean, I know we have the wellness initiatives, and that's great, but I think employees are having to do that on their own time, right? Weekends and after school. So wellness days is a great way to actually give them time for themselves. So all of those things, I, I'd love to see, um, as part of a, a bigger, you know, this is, yeah.
Any other?
I have one more item, real quick, and it's just, uh, and, and I don't have to go into deep, uh, discussion over it. It's the budget development calendar, and what I've done is, um, I think, if you will notice, on April fourth, uh, we're gonna provide you with the, the campus and department allocations that entail that we normally share org charts and their allocations, proposed allocations for next year. That's gonna be provided to you on May second, the movement is to May second, when we have our next budget workshop. Um, then I'm also proposing that, um, we, within our calendar, we had embedded, uh, there's a, a fourteen day, fourteen business day, uh, timeframe from the time you see the, the, that product, the budgets, for trustees to provide any recommendations or, or thoughts on what they found. And so the deadline or the, the new, uh, uh, trigger for that, uh, submission is November nineteenth. Um, and then, I think the most, the one that's most critical, and the board will be seeing this through one of our, the budget, I'm sorry, the agenda in a board meeting, is, uh, moving the budget workshop from June sixth to June eighth. And just moving that, that schedule. And that's all I have.
Right, so I think we need to coordinate here, is that you'll get a, a pretty detailed, uh, packet on, um, May the second with the nitty-gritty details of, of allocations to, you know, departments, um, programs, all that kind of stuff that you'll review, um, in preparation for May nineteenth.
So light up?